State is thirty-six point one million.
So you're getting close to forty million dollars in that. That's the biggest thing you had this cruise in the United States, isn't it? The cruise in itself is one of the biggest in the nation.
Well, we are, I would think, getting to that point. If we're not, we have been voted the number-one car show in the country by USA Today for the last five years. So people like coming here. Whether we're the biggest or not, I think we're the best, so.
Well, you're number one. They just, eh, they finally got you to say that. You didn't say that before. Should've told her right off the bat. Come on, what are you selling now? You gotta work better than that one.
Well, we're doing, let me just say this. When we started Cruising the Coast in nineteen ninety-six, we wanted to help the economy of South Mississippi out. And the way I look at it, Cruising the Coast is doing its job. So we're proud of that.
When you did it as an off-season, the reason you did it when you did it, correct?
Right.
All right. Any other questions from the council?
What's the record? What's the record? Cars, registered cars?
Last year, ten thousand seventy. That was forty-five states, Canada, Germany, and England that were here last year.
You'll beat that this year.
We're, we're on par with last year right now.
Seventy-three, forty-six is where you were last year roughly at this time?
Yes. It fluctuates a good bit now because it's rushed to register before the deadline, so.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Good to see you as always. Anybody else? There's no energy left in the room. Any, any other questions? Any other presentations? Okay, there being none. We don't, we have no plans to make, I guess, a decision today. We'll, we'll think about this and ruminate this, ruminate on what we heard today, and probably compare notes. The next couple of weeks, we'll be making decisions after we hear a little more on the budget. So thank, thank you for coming today. Appreciate your patience. And Reverend Pennington, again, I'm sorry for the way we opened the meeting. Not, not we, me. All right? Thank you. All right, we wanna...
Yeah, I think, as we exit, I think you've got the latest and greatest numbers as we presented it and updated it. We added a couple of positions in that spreadsheet at the top and, and with the, we tried to work numbers as best we could. But I thought at this point in time, the numbers are relatively the same. We added about a few positions to public, to Police Department. So if you can look at that first page, I'll go over that, and then if you would think, whatever discussion you want to go forward with.
So we're looking at the, in our binder, we're looking at the Police Department?
Departmental, yeah. And if you'd like, after we take a few minutes on this page.
That's in the very front, right?
First page, right, yeah. And then, you know, probably it makes sense since we got all the department folks here, we can run through as many as you can stand, you know, in the next few hours. The bottom line, we've worked the numbers as hard as we could. The biggest impact, if you can look up in the right corner, again, was ninety-four hundred dollars difference, ninety-nine point four million dollars difference. It was like nine point oh, 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 four last week. But the difference primarily became the addition of five PDs, four officers and one administrative paper. Yeah. If, if, in the center of the page, employee count, that, that, that area, the two in, in yellow, the big impact to, I guess, you know, the raises and, and position realignments and so forth, one point seven million over last year. And we tried to offset that in the capital outlay, which reduced it one point seven million. Again, the restructure hit as many people, as many folks as we possibly could. But three percent was sort of the, the thing that really didn't impact a lot of the, I think, top brackets of each pay grades. If we went to five percent, it would, it would actually complicate a lot of those pay grades. And, and either you have to change the pay grades or, or reduce the amount of increases these people would hit. I don't know, I don't have the count, but Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, we estimated about four hundred additional, a thousand dollars to do that. Pretty much right? If we went from three to five, about four hundred thousand, maybe four hundred fifty thousand dollars to the budget. It would add four hundred thousand dollars more to the difference.
Right, okay.
Right now, we, aside...
But if I understood you correctly, to increase the, the proposed pay increase from three to five percent would be a little over four hundred thousand?
More.
Based on the methodology you're, you're using, okay?
So where we are right now, lead you to the, to the second page. So if we were to start with the estimated end of FY twenty-four of ten million five, and then do the arithmetic of what, you know, the debits and credits, we'd still, at the end of the exercise, after transfers and those kinds of things, would still have a million at the end of FY twenty-five. And I thought that was reasonable. I don't think we need to venture much more past that. In, in all ways, we did, we just went over departmental, and I think we pretty much held the line at reducing that amount by ninety thousand, from one point nine million ninety-one thousand to one point nine million. So what we just went over, reduced that amount to about ninety thousand dollars. We'll have time, but, but bottom line, a point I wanted to make, we touched a lot of folks at, at the entry level, and we touched a lot of folks, you know, in PD and, and other places with the three percent. If you weren't, you're gonna get at least three percent. Is that pretty much correct? Yeah. So with that being said, go to the second page, and I'll...
Wait a minute, can I, uh...
Is this one on...
On the Police Department?
Yeah.
When you got the contractual services at two point five million, is that overtime? Particularly overtime?
No, that's a different, that's some of the software and license. A lot of it's software that we pay. Software that, you know, contractual relationship with, with software licenses and, and maintenance on pieces of software that we use.
I saw that, we got like twenty-three million, the total amount of contractual services. So that's, that's just nothing to do, and hiring people to clean up. That's all the renting the machines, is that those type of contracts and everything? But that line runs a twenty-three point four million on the contract all the way down. So I mean, yeah, well, this one here?
First page?
Yeah. I just, I just added the total was a ten million, then you had twelve million, then you had three forty-eights. So I just said it was twenty-three four. So, but that's included in not hiring people to clean grass extra. That's contract with the, the machines, the ones that stuff we rent.
For Police Department?
No, no, well, all of it. I just, I did the total. The Police Department was twenty-five million.
He's looking at, yeah, okay, he's looking at your spreadsheet, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's what he's looking at, um...
So it's roughly twenty-three million. So I was just finding, I know we hired people to help clean.
I don't see twenty-three million.
I said, you know, we hired people to help clean. Is that part of the contractual services?
Contractual services, but in Police Department, that's mostly software and, and licenses, and jail, and, and those kinds of things. Jail contracts, I think, you know, we had about a half a million on that one this year. Over half a million.
Well, could we...
That's a kind, but contractual services, and it comes to public works, would be people like Express Two, where we're hiring certain services, or bottom to top, which is our construction folks that do certain things for us. Bottom to top, that would be contractual services.
Yeah, but that's what I'm trying to find out, if we was tied that into the people who they hired extra, like to cut the grass, to clean the ditches.
Right.
So it's all, it's combination of that and the machines and everything they rent. Is it the contractual thing, the total?
Contractual services, yeah.
Do you have any amount which we actually pay people to come in to do something? Does that, is that way separated? Could you separate that? I know you said a lot, every day, we always check them for the copying machines and stuff like that. We've got plenty of them.
Yeah, and that would be in contractual services for...
Right, but I'm just saying, do we have amount that, in that amount, that you actually hire people to come do stuff?
I don't can't tell you the whole dollar amount, but we, every day, we'll, next, this Thursday, we're gonna be interviewing some folks, lawn, lawn folks to actually do some specific services. That's probably, and, you know, probably, it costs us about eighteen dollars an hour to hire a crew. We're always, we should have three or four full-time crews. Right now, we can field two full-time crews to do the grass cutting. So we gotta fill it in some way. We got between now and, you know, November, the grass cutting area. The burden rate for that, when we hire third-party Express Two, I think that's the one they gave us a quote, they would be paying them thirteen sixty-five an hour, and we would pay them eighteen dollars an hour. Okay? So, but that would, we did, that's all we, because we don't play FICA, we don't play Pierce, we don't play those. So I mean, that's the arithmetic, the burden rate. And we, we would only, we would get an hour's worth of work for that eighteen dollars, too. So there's a lot of arithmetic. But to answer your question, that would be, that total dollar amount, I can figure that out. We'll, we'll ask Billy Ray how much we've spent in that area, both in Orton Sewer, because we have to do some folks to do some digging and do some, some of those kinds of things.
All right, if we could, if we could do this at this point, let's just take it department by department.
Good deal, right.
Just, I think it might be a little more organized if we follow this. So Chief Miller, if you don't mind. So we're gonna look at the, if you turn to the police tab in your, in your binder. And Chief, I have a couple of questions as we go, and you may or may not know the answer. So in, in our binders, we have it broken, broken down. We have the Director's Office. And how many folks just in your office with the wages and salaries are, proposed to be a hundred ninety-four thousand? That's your salary and probably a few others?
I think that's just myself and Chris Deback, Assistant Chief.
So that would be...
Yeah, it has been different in the past, but we've changed that up a little bit.
Okay, so that's, that's two people, and there are no vacancies. Okay. And if you don't mind, let me go through these others real quick. Then you have the Director's Staff. That's a separate budget. That's the org number fifth oh-one-five-one-two. Do you know how many people are in that department?
So that, that's gonna be all the admin assistants throughout the department, and I think you're saying there's seventeen? Okay. Intel analyst and, and...
So how many would that be? Seventeen. And are any of those positions vacant at the moment? How many are vacant right now, do we know? Five? Thank you. And then fifteen oh-one-five-two-one is Communications. How many folks are in that section? Twenty-five. And how many of those are vacant? Seven, thank you. And then we have the Records and the Desk. How many people are in that division? Thirteen. How many are vacant? Three, thank you. Right, at, at some point in time recently. It's gonna vary from day to day. And then we go to the Garage and Maintenance. How many people are there? Seven. How many vacancies? One, thank you. And then Animal Control, are there? Two. Any vacancies? No, okay. And then Patrol Operations, this is gonna be a bunch, I'm sure. Any idea?
Well, it's, like she said, it's fluid, because tomorrow, we'll be swearing in seven new policemen. So that's gonna skew the numbers that we have here right now. That's right.
So, so it's gonna be rough, what? One, one fifty-two. Are there any vacant positions? How many? Okay. All right, and we have how many part-time?
Five, that's right.
Okay. I have some questions a little later, but I'll give other folks an opportunity. We'll start over here on my right, Mr., what's your name? Shoemaker? Go ahead, Mr. Shoemaker. Any thoughts, questions, or comments?
I did, but I can't recall what they were. I'm so shocked with what you said.
I know. Well, I can, I can come back to you if you like. Mr. Glavine, anything?
Um, I'm looking in some of these line items, and pardon me, I don't have detail, but in Small Tools, Minor Equipment, you have an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That's a pretty big jump. Small tools.
Yeah, so there's been some, we've restructured some of the way that we do some of that, and I can, I can tell you what, what some of that is.
Just general, generally?
Yeah. So it's, it's new handgun trade. It's time to trade in our handguns. That's, that's included in there. All our janitorial supplies are included in there. And that, that's going up a good bit for us also. Then all of our lubricants, any small tools for the garage, eye protection, motorcycle helmets, all that's in there. Then there's some, some items for different offices, blinds and things like that are in there. Monitors, and then the crime cameras, the ones we're putting up all through the city, the Real-Time Crime Center, all that's included in Small Tools, too, which, which is part of the, the increase that you're seeing. And I'm just, I'm just looking for the big items right now that, that are there.
I think that generalizes it. I'm just trying to understand, get my mind around why this year, last year, but it's just coming time to kind of rotate those things out and replace some things that are...
There is.
Worn out. Is that what, where we are?
We are. And then, again, the Real-Time Crime Center is a big portion of that.
Okay, two, two other things. Flipping over to Harrison County Jail, that's going up a hundred and forty-four thousand. What, what is that in relations to? And that's account number fifteen-eleven-dash-six-six-three-six.
So there's an increase from there. First of all, a year before last, they went up on what they charge as prisoners, to house prisoners. They went up on what they charged us, and we also added the new program through the court. The ankle monitoring program is paid for out of that money also.
Putting more people in jail, too.
And we're putting, we're putting more people in jail. And, and not only that, the county jail has loosened some of the restrictions that they had that didn't allow us to put different crimes in jail, misdemeanor crimes in jail. And now they're allowing some of that.
And the conference training, convention conference training's going up significantly?
Yeah, training, training has gone up significantly anyway. But we went for a couple of years without sending anybody to real management schools, and it's time, we've got to start doing that. Some of those management schools are very expensive. And then the Forensics Academy, we're sending a couple of people to the Forensic Academy, and that's, that's like thirteen grand a person to go through that.
Chief might want to mention, too, what we're doing on Division Street, offset not only the rent, the places we rented, but also we've conducted a number of trainings already on Division Street.
We have, we have.
Put a significant amount of upgrade to that, that footprint there.
That we, absolutely, we have. We spent a good bit of money there, but that's all gonna pay off for us. It's already paying off. And what the mayor's referring to, we'll be doing training there for the whole coast. I mean, they'll be coming there, and we should, we should be able to recoup some of our money there.
Chief, I'll point that out.
Year over there, just for the rent of the building.
That's right.
What number you got there, Kenny?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman. It's account fifteen-eleven-dash-six-six-seven-two.
Six-six-seven-two?
Yep, Convention Conference Training. It was, three hundred and sixty-four thousand was budgeted last year. I don't know how much we used, but we've went up to six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars this year. That's a two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase. I want to point it, point that out, because as we talk about compensation, as we talk about training, this, this is a benefit to our officers and our personnel to get them trained and get their skill set at a level that adds value to their, to them.
It, it absolutely does. It adds value to the whole city, and it, it brings our department to where it needs to be. You know, one of the top departments in the state of Mississippi. And it's simply because of the training. We're, we're required to do twenty-four hours of continuing education a year, as it is. Every officer has to do that. And what we have tried to do is almost double that. Not included in those twenty-four hours of continuing education every year are a host of things that the state requires, that we have, we have to, we have to contend with that also.
I, I just want our men and women to understand that we, we are, we recognize that. And, you know, you look at this budget, and, and that's telling them, not only are we looking at increases in compensation, but we're looking at increases in your training. So you're gonna be a better-prepared officer and professional law enforcement, you know, person. So, all right, that's all I had.
Mr. McGilvery?
Well, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, but I think after tomorrow, we'll have, and this is a total throughout the department, not just sworn officers, but as of right now, I think it's twenty-seven. Yeah, the total number of vacancies. Yeah. And what do you have there from? Okay, so twenty-seven is reasonable, but we're, we're right there somewhere. It's very close right there.
Thank you.
But again, tomorrow, tomorrow, Councilman, that'll be different.
All right, thank you. Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. Guns, anything?
Yeah, just wanted to let you know that I sent an email about the Juneteenth and Martin of the King. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, anything?
Yeah, we got a, under the six, eight hundreds, you dropped all the, is everything the negatives on the machinery? How come that's all been eliminated?
Capital outlay?
Yeah, well, I just said you have a machine equipment.
Yeah, that's capital outlay machinery equipment, yeah. Reduce a number of vehicles and a number of things in the capital budget. That was a total in that area.
There's a lot of decreases, you know what I mean? It just said everything's gone.
A couple of grants, too, I guess.
Well, you got a million three, but it's six, seven, six hundred thousand dollars, something like that difference, you know? So I just wonder what happened that we wouldn't do anything. And let's see, on the, on the plus seven, are they in this program already? They listed in salaries in that?
They are, yes.
They said, okay, do you have any more comment after that? You have another program solid where you have...
We do. We have a couple right after that, that, that we hope, we've still gotta go through the background and some other, some other issues, but we hope to continue to pick officers up almost monthly.
Let me ask, Chief, the rumors of, of the structure's gotta help your position, don't you think, as far as?
Absolutely. I think that's why we're seeing that seven already. And I know that's what happened in Dispatch. Dispatch, we had seven. We haven't had seven applicants in Dispatch. I couldn't tell you when, and I, I know that it was the change in pay.
Yeah, I know we talked about having like an extra thirty people. You could eliminate a lot of the overtime. So I didn't know, we're trying to get there. With just seven, is a plus, or we losing people, too? Is it a plus seven, or we lost a couple retired or something?
Yeah, they lose, you know, one or two on a regularly scheduled basis. But I think, you know, the opportunity, we put more folks in there with more vacancies, at the, at these proposed rates, the opportunity to fill those in a more timely manner. We don't want to go this time next year and have that number of vacancies. And that was the whole push with all our, you know, I guess, our, our structure in, in Patrol, you know, three, two, and one, to get there. So I'm confident, Chief, you're confident that we're...
I'm confident that we'll see a decrease in people leaving to go somewhere else. I think we'll see that within the next three or four months. We'll see that subside, and then we'll just see, we'll just start picking people back up.
Yeah, I know we had discussed about actually thirty people you could pretty much eliminate the million half in overtime. Probably can't eliminate all of it, but, you know.
It would certainly help, sir.
Definitely. So I mean, if you're paying, you're paying it out anyway, one way or the other, you know?
Right.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, one on the, I guess, when you said it probably answered that question, is a seven hundred thousand more on the bottom? Is that, could we have the seven new people coming in? As far as salaries and wages, on sixty-ten, it's a plus seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. So I don't know if I was counting the...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what.
That's sixty-ten.
Thirteen, I think.
Salaries and wages, is that...
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be the, the raise is there now.
Seven thirteen, total net in that area, that's right.
And that's the plus people that's, we, okay. And they'll be sworn in tomorrow?
Seven of them will be sworn in tomorrow.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, couple of line items. Looking back at, under the Director's Office, oh-one-five-one-one six oh-five-two, it's tuition reimbursement. And we budgeted fifty thousand for this current year, and at the end of month nine, we had spent about almost ten percent of that. At about forty-nine hundred, there was forty-five thousand available at the end of June. Are we gonna, is there anything else coming out of that account? Is there any other tuition?
So that, that's gonna be officers that are working on getting their degree. And so, yeah, there will be money coming out of that.
Okay, so, and, 'cause I don't know, but, but you might. So we budgeted fifty thousand. We budgeted fifty thousand. We've paid out a little less than five thousand at this point. Do you, I guess, pay them at the end of the semester or somebody? So, so all of that will be gone by your best...
I, I don't know if all of it will be gone, but some of it will be gone. And it's kind of hard to ask, because you don't know when someone's gonna start the school. You know, they did just ask us to, if, if a particular class that they want to go to is approved, if they're working on their degree. And...
Does anybody track that, so we have, kind of have a feel for how much of that is going to be spent? I'm just wondering how much of that's gonna be, we budgeted fifty thousand, how much of it's going to be spent? And looking forward to next year, would we need to budget? We're looking at budgeting another fifty thousand. So I, you may not know right now.
That would be something I'd have to look at and see. Fifty thousand, year after year, that's what we budget, is fifty thousand.
Okay. On, on computer supplies, that's under the Director's Office, that's sixty-two-twelve. We budgeted eighty-six hundred this current year, and at the end of month nine, we had six thousand left. We'd only spent about thirty percent of it. Are we gonna expend all those dollars? I mean, we've got a couple more months to go at this point, three months. Can, or can we reduce that figure? I'm just...
We may, we may be able to reduce it some, but like you said, we've got several months to go.
Right. Mayor?
Question I've got to ask to Diana and the Chief, too. Okay, you, you, you got unencumbered budgets of six thousand is what you're trying to say for FY twenty-four. So what, I think the question you're asking is, what do we do with that, it comes ten-one or nine-thirty? I don't think we're gonna make a budget amendment to roll that six thousand. It goes away. We have fifty thousand in that same classification.
Right.
That hits twenty-five, and we start again. The difference is reflected, you know, we didn't spend it. We didn't have a purchase order, and we didn't spend it. So it would be reflected in the difference between actual expenditures and actual revenues. It'd be reflected in fund balance.
Right. Now, I, I follow, I follow you on that. I'm just, I'm just looking to compare how much we've budgeted this year, and then how much, well, and looking ahead to next year, can we reduce those, those budget figures?
Chris and John and I had a meeting on Friday to go over some expenses, but I could not incorporate them in because I had to get the information to you guys. But when But when we looked at that line item, we chose to leave it at 8,600 because in '22, we spent 3300, I'm sorry, 8,300, and in '23, we spent 9,300.
Right, okay, and that's, right, I don't have...
So we, we felt that that number was, you, you don't know when you're gonna need something, but based on history, we've met that figure.
Exactly, and I, I don't have the historicals, and there's no, you didn't have time to do that, and I don't know if the print would be big enough if we put it all on a sheet to follow.
So when we submit the budget, we do a five-year average, and I think that Diana, Diana does it a couple of years.
Well, it kinda changed a little bit because COVID changed pricing so much.
Right.
So really, anything past two years is irrelevant because prices have increased more so in the past years, or year or two.
Exactly, significantly, right?
In some areas, yes.
So given the record amount of revenue for gaming and sales tax, that's pretty much offset by the increased cost since COVID. And we appreciate those record numbers, I'm not knocking that. That's great news. Publications on 6214, I think.
We've agreed to reduce that to 3,000. I have not had time to incorporate that change.
And then on line item 6224, NSS, I'm not sure what that is.
Needs to stay that way, those are investigative funds that come from the forfeiture account.
I have a question, Paul, were you right there on the uniforms?
Sure, go ahead.
You decreased 43,000, but you, the top one, you had a plus 20. How do you decrease the uniform?
What, what number is that?
That's at 6226, 2626, GR 1621, 23. You look like you eliminated 43,000, but you added 20,000 to the top line.
I'll answer, John, that was grant revenue, and we've spent those grant dollars, and they're not gonna be recurring this year.
Right, so anything with a GR in front of it is grant money, for the most part, we never know what that's gonna be. It's almost irrelevant here for budgeting purposes.
Right, but it happened in '24, so it's reflected.
Gotcha.
So we have to, we apply on the grants, or how's that work?
If there's something to apply for.
So all that was grant money and 43,000? Okay.
All right, next, next line item is 6248, it's awards. We budgeted 11,000, the end of June, we'd only spent $65,000. Are we able to reduce that 11,000 any for next year?
I think we reduced that by...
We went to 10.
10.
Right, but last year, we spent 10.
Okay, so this year, you're looking at 11, correct?
We were going down to 10.
Okay, down to 10, thank you. Then on line item 6276, which is finishing, I'm not sure exactly what finish, well, finishing supplies. We'd budgeted 30,000 last year, we're looking to budget 25,000 this year. And at the end of June, we'd only spent 3,000. Can we knock down that 25,000 any for 2025 under finishing?
We're actually gonna be taking it up to 30 because there's several areas of concern that the Police Department would like to address in '25.
Okay, if you could make a note of those, I'd be interested in that, just, no big whoop. Then if we look at, under Other Services and Charges, line item 6420, it's medical, we budgeted 2850, we hadn't spent any of that by the end of June.
We're, we're reducing it to zero.
Zero, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, then 6446 is postage. We'd budgeted 7250.
Going down to 5.
And then Advertising, we'd only spent about 1,600.
Going down to 5.
It's going down to 5?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, under Contractual Services, 6606.
6606?
Yeah, I may have, let's see.
Yeah, that's Electrical.
Yeah, it's under Contractual Services, I'm sorry. That would be Electrical. Let me find it on my... We had budgeted 20,000, but we'd only spent 3,500 of that at the end of June.
We're planning to keep it at 20. Last year, they spent 14.
Okay, and, so, and currently, we're slated for 20. You're leaving it at 20 or knocking that down a little? Leaving it at 20?
Leaving it at 20.
All right. And then Electronic, right below that on 6608, we're looking at 10,000, we'd spent half of that, 5,000. You looking to reduce that any or leaving it at 10?
Leaving it at 10.
Leaving that at 10.
Okay. Then on line item 6612, we'd budgeted 447 this year, and we'd spent about half of that by the end of June.
And we're still leaving that at 447.
Okay. Then, let's see, we go down to Other Contractual Services, that's 6649.
And we're leaving that at 43.
All right, you're leaving that at 43, okay. Then that brings us down to Membership and Dues, that's 6690.
Well, I would like to point out also that after our meeting, we agreed to take training and conference down to 400,000. They went back and reviewed everything further, and they believe that they can handle everything in the lesser amount.
Is, is that 6672, Diana?
Correct.
So we're dropping that from 623 to 400?
Correct.
All right, let's see, that brings us to, let's see, 6690 is Membership and Dues. We'd budgeted 8,500, we'd spent a little less than half of that, 4,200. Were we leaving that the same?
5,000.
Yeah.
Not gonna...
Something comes in later in the year, 'cause it comes almost to the 5.
Right, that's one of the things I don't know, is when some of these things come due and so forth. Then on Subscriptions, 6691, we'd budgeted 5,000, we'd spent about a little over a quarter of that.
What was that last number you said, Paul?
The last one was 6691, which was Subscriptions.
6691, okay, I see.
Okay. And then on 6699, it just says Reserved, and I'm not sure what that is.
When we did the budget for '24, we had put money in for software that ended in being paid in '23, so I moved it to a reserve account. I have since moved that money to pay for the higher jail invoices.
Okay, so, so that line's gonna, that line item's gonna disappear, or no, will it remain as it is?
It will remain in there because I'm not gonna pull the prior year, I don't update continuously, I can't.
Gotcha, I understand, thank you, Diana. Then, let's see. All right, going to the section on Communications, that's 01521-6014, which is Overtime. And with the, with the hirings in Communication, I'm assuming theoretically, we should lower the overtime costs there, but we had budgeted 125, and we'd spent 181, and that's due to the shortage of manpower there, so hopefully that, that number's gonna go down, I think Mr. Lawrence mentioned that. All right, then, then, all right, Chief, you're off the hook, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Diana, thank you. What I would suggest is that we stop here at this time, at 4 o'clock, we have an insurance meeting. Si Easterly, Jamie, smile, exhale, there you go, you did good. I wanna thank everybody for their patience and time. A couple of things, housekeeping before we adjourn here. For our next Budget Workshop, we'd like to, again, it'll, it'll be styled just what we have styled the past couple of meetings. This'll be a Budget Workshop following our council meeting next Tuesday at 1:30. Carrie, if you'd make a note of that. And we'll start, I guess we'll start with the Fire Department, and then we'll move, I don't know what order we're gonna move through the other departments, but hopefully you can be here and answer questions, Chief. You could sit in the back and relax. Okay? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
There you go, Mr. Guines, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I think everybody's second to that, Mr. Glavine? And discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Again, we're gonna have an insurance group meeting, and Si Easterly will be here to kinda up, update the group of employees we've met with and a couple of the council members here so they know what the insurance costs will be. Thank you so much.
Did you get a little when you came in?
Great, man.
Yeah, but I, I think, no, I know. I guess, yeah, it's there.
Hey, I'm ready, let's go to 6.
We are, and I look, and we see...
Bring in the coffee.